Thank you, everyone. It is now 5:30 and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council and it is our work session. And all of our work sessions are very informal and we go directly to agenda items. And the meeting is both in person and online, so our residents and guests can join us on burnsvilleamend.gov/meetings or can also view us on Comcast Channel 16 or 859. And if you want to speak or join us in the meeting, you can also do that through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. And all of the information on the background materials for tonight's meeting is on the website and you can find it on our meeting page. And the first item on the agenda is Mr. Jeff Thompson's item and it's the community development item. So, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, we're here tonight to talk again about the environmental legacy funding that the city has been allocated from Dakota County and next steps on that grant and a couple of projects that we've had apply for that. So, just as a bit of background, as you know, it was back in 2018, the county actually established a pilot project, a pilot grant project using the Environmental Legacy Fund. And then in 2020, kind of in the second round of funding, we received a $1.1 million allocation from Dakota County through the ELF Grant to support, it was a pretty general allocation, but to support redevelopment efforts, economic development and redevelopment efforts in Burnsville. The intention of the grant was to, again, support redevelopment initiatives and the economic development benefits from them. So, recognizing that repositioning properties can have higher costs associated with land acquisition, existing assets, demolition, a number of the things that can create barriers to redevelopment to help support that. As you know, at the end of, it was like October of last year, we were running up upon the deadline for the ELF Grant that was going to expire at the end of November. And so, we requested an extension of Dakota County. At the time, we had identified the MWF project in heart of the city as a potential funding option for that extension because we wanted to pair it with a specific project. Dakota County did ultimately grant us that extension and there were two important milestone dates to remember. One, as a condition of that extension, we have to have a project identified by May of this year. And then, we have to have the funds expended by November of this year. So, those are the conditions of the extension that we've been working against to make sure that we can utilize these funds for economic development benefit to the city of Burnsville. Is that me that's doing that? No, okay. Okay. That's fine. So, as included in your background, there are two projects that have specifically applied for this funding. So, I did just want to walk through those two projects. You're first on them. You've reviewed the land use entitlements for both of them, but just give you a quick overview of those two projects and talk a little bit about how we've reviewed those in terms of consistency with the ELF Grant as well as our development tools and public financing policy that the council has. So, the first, as I mentioned, is MWF. This is for the Concorded Place or the Concorded Office condos. Again, this is the project that we identified with the extension request. It would be Phase Three of their development in the Pleasant Avenue corridor. As you know, the two buildings that are under construction today, this would be a third phase of 111 units, multifamily. It's called seniors, 55-plus would be the age demographic and there would be an affordability component included in it. And as I mentioned, you reviewed the plat and some other items at a recent regular meeting as part of the land use entitlements. So, in terms of reviewing against the ELF criteria as well as our development tools policy, this project isn't a priority area. So, we have some priority areas of investment in our tools policy. This is in heart of the city, so it's certainly consistent with that. They are pursuing other funding options or because of the affordability component, there are other pools of funding from other agencies that they're able to apply for. So, they are still seeking those as alternative funding sources. We're entirely unsure if it would meet the better, best design criteria, which is a requirement in our policy. And probably most important in our review is that it is entirely residential. So, it's certainly a different dynamic of a project. And at least from the, for sure from the county's perspective, at least from their staff, they believe that the real intent of the ELF is to support commercial tax-based growth and job creation. And so, they've, at least in conversations with their staff, indicated some concerns about disqualifying for use of the funds. The second project, which you're well aware of as well as the Pacifica-Burnsville project from the Windfall Group, this is obviously at the north end of Burnsville Center. The land that they own today involves two phases. For purposes of this application, we're really considering it one project for purposes of funding. But it would be a remodel of the vacant spaces within the building. There would be a 15,000-square-foot building addition constructed and then an entire kind of exterior facade improvements along the site. As you know, it would include a grocery store, restaurant, food hall. So, includes the commercial, kind of a mix of different commercial restaurant uses. And then also does include a number of what I would consider kind of public amenities. There's outdoor dining, outdoor plaza, some pedestrian connections that would occur as part of this project. Again, reviewing with the criteria of the two items, this is obviously within another priority area. We've had recent conversations of the council's direction to ensure that we're investing in Burnsville Center and continuing to see evolution there. They initially applied for tax increment financing. As you know, there's special legislation that we could establish a TIF district. I know we included in the packet memo from Ellers with more detailed analysis of that, but ultimately, we found that that wasn't the best funding source just because it didn't generate enough tax increment. That really capturing 25 years of increment to fill a gap when we had a $1.1 million in the bank, essentially funding now is a much better option, both on our perspective for them to have the cash upfront rather than a pay-as-you-go scenario. And second, we have these deadlines and this grant available to us. So, we position, we kind of repositioned the conversation from TIF focusing on the ELF Grant for this project. They do meet the better, best design criteria. As I mentioned, this would be entirely commercial, so it creates that commercial tax base. They have identified their job creation goals, which will be included in our agreement with them. That was, were also included in your packet in the narrative, but they have identified those. And there's certainly business and entrepreneurial opportunities with this project. So, and then in conversations with the county, because it's meeting those ELF goals, they have been at a staff level supportive of this project proceeding with the request for funding by the May deadline. So, we are recommending the council proceed with the Pacifica-Burnsville project for the allocation of the ELF Grant. We have reviewed it comprehensively against the development tools policy and find it meets a number of the public purpose statements that are in there. It's in a priority. It creates tax base. And again, there are specific job and wage goals identified. We've also done just a detailed analysis of their pro forma, their development financing models, their return on investment, their yield on cost to ensure that, one, they have to meet the but-for test to show that the project would not move forward but for public financing. And they do meet that as well as there is a demonstrated need to support this project in the private marketplace to ensure investment in Burnsville Center. So, as I mentioned, we are recommending the council allocate the ELF to the Pacifica project. And if upon discussion tonight, the next steps would be at the May 2 regular city council meeting, we would bring forward, we would have to hold a public hearing for the business assistance, which is required by statute. There would be a resolution of support to send to the county for this project. And then, we are prepared to enter into the sub-grant agreement so that they can commence the construction of this project as soon as possible. We would need to kind of have that final negotiated agreement in place though by that date. And then, pending all that, the county board is scheduled to review this on May 23. So, with that, Mayor and Council, I'm here to answer questions. Ms. Dean's here as well if there are questions. And we know representatives of Windfall are here tonight to answer any of your questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, members of the council. Any questions in looking at the background and the work that staff has done? They've done a great analysis of both projects and meeting the criteria that we have for our allocation of assistance and also what the county is asking us to do. Yes?
Is there a time frame for the beginning of construction and when are we going to be done with both ages?
I can answer what we're, what we would allow under the sub-grant agreement. I would defer the timeline for construction specifically to the developer because we need to meet the but-for test and demonstration of need. They cannot begin until we've signed that grant agreement with them. So, construction from, we could issue permits. They could apply for permits now, but we wouldn't be able to issue the permits to start construction until after that grant agreement is in place. And then, they can speak to the timeline.
I understand. The extension of the building itself is what really puts them in a position for the ELF Grant. Without that, just remodeling wouldn't work, correct? That's why I'm kind of asking the timeline and when that's going to start happening.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, yes, that's correct. We are, the sub-grant agreement will cover the project being defined as both phases, both the interior model and the expansion. So, that's how we're defining the project. And they will have to deliver that, what we're funding is the completion of that project. So, we will tie any sort of distribution of the funds to completion of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, yes, Ben?
So, you're looking for us to pick which project?
No, they're recommending Pacifica-Burnsville.
I think it's a no-brainer that we go with Windfall. MWF sells their buildings as soon as they're done. And I see a longer-term relationship with Windfall here. So, I'm happy with the proposal to move forward with the Windfall Group, 100%.
Okay. Member Key.
I would concur. As I've spoken in public settings a couple of times before, I believe we have to find every tool we have in our toolbox to help reinvigorate our mall. And the Pacifica Group, Windfall have been already stepping up with the acquisition and the projects that they're doing. And I'm delighted to see that we have the opportunity for this ELF Grant to go to them for this particular project. So, I support it 100%.
Okay. Carol?
I would also agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. I think our staff has done a great job in really understanding what we need to do. Also, the partnership with the county. Thank you for all of the conversations going back and forth, getting a good understanding of what their needs are and what we need to do and make sure that we get everything in place so that we meet the deadlines that the county has for us. And just looking at your analysis, the Pacifica-Burnsville-Windfall Group really meets all of the criteria that you presented.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was going to ask, but I answered it, but then she, who was her way, I didn't remain up here.
We should go with and we are doing your recommendation. It is the right thing for us to do. So, members of the council, if you don't have any other questions, yes?
I don't know if we're going to have an opportunity to have representation from them here again. So, I don't know if they want to give us a quick update on how things are going or if that's even desirable at this point.
Sure. You do want to hear from them. Is that what I'm understanding?
Just a quick little update on...
Okay. You come to the table.
Because I don't know if we're going to see them.
And, oh, come to the table. But people at home don't see them. You will see them.
Yeah. I think given the magnitude of what they're doing at our regional mall, this is a great opportunity for them to speak to the public.
Right here, there's, right up in front, and there are microphones.
This isn't like a congressional hearing.
And then, give your name and address for the record. Yeah. Because some of us know you and we have met you, but I, the rest don't and our citizens don't. So, please give your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Christina Lee and address is 9007 Springwood Drive in Woodbury.
You need to speak a little louder, Christina.
Sure. It's Woodbury, Minnesota, 55125. And I am representing the local partners of Pacifica-Windfall here in Minnesota. And we are so, so excited and thankful to every one of you for your support of our project. Right now, I'm so excited. Like, we want to build it like yesterday. So, the reason for the wait is definitely because we needed to apply for the funding, the TIF, and then being redirected to the ELF. And as soon as we know from the council that this is the way, the direction and the support that we have, we will proceed with building out the entire, the entire project. So, we're ready to go now.
And you're clear with what our staff have told you about what the county needs for us to do. All of this is, needs to be spent by November.
Oh, yes. I believe.
So, you need to file your application and your permits and all of that because this $1.1 million has a deadline.
Has a deadline. Okay. Very good. Very good.
So, you need to work very closely with our staff and make sure you meet all of the deadlines so you don't lose the money. And that means we lose the money as well.
All right. All right.
Okay? The county has some very strict guidelines because we had to ask for an extension.
I see. I see. Okay. We will move as fast as we can. We have contractors lined up now. So, we would just need to tweak that and then proceed with permits and demo. So, we're so excited.
And Christina, I do know that you have two different architects. They need to talk.
Oh, yes.
And they need to make sure that they talk to our staff.
That's right. Good.
So, that you have your plans together before you file your application.
All right. We'll do the best to connect them and get that to you ASAP. Thank you.
And our staff stand ready to help you.
Yes. You've been so great, every one of you in the city of Burnsville. We really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And when you talk to Eddie, tell him we say hello.
I will.
Eddie, for our residents, Eddie is the, I think he's the chairman of the Windfall Group, that whole investor group. And he's in Chicago.
That's right. That's right. And he is, I will do so to let them know, let you say hello. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Christina.
You're welcome.
Hello, Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if you can hear me, but it's CDAs staff.
Your recommendation is accepted and so we'll follow your guidance with what you have presented here so that we can move forward. And because the CDA Board has to have this, we have to read it because they've been very kind. I think the Board has been very kind and I thank Commissioner Workman for her help with all of this to help us get the extension. So, I'm grateful to her for her support. But I want to make sure that we are good partners to make sure that we meet all of those deadlines. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item then on the agenda is the Lake Marion Trail Gap Project Options. And presenting is our Public Works Director, Ryan Peterson.
We got visitors, too?
Yeah. I will ask all of them to introduce themselves.
They don't want this trail because they're put strangers in their neighborhood.
Yeah. I think as they come in, if you can all have a seat, there are seats along the wall. Yeah. You sit along the wall. Yeah.
It's a trail.
Thank you. Okay. Ryan?
Yeah.
The floor is yours.
Good. Thank you very much. As we're...
And you have a guest with, would you like to introduce your guest?
I certainly will. We're here to discuss the Lake Marion Trail Grant project tonight. And I'm lucky enough to have John Mertens. He's with the Dakota County Parks Department. And he gets planning done for the greenway system all around Dakota County.
Yeah. And I want to thank you for your partnership on this because this has been a journey.
Yes, it has.
Yeah. And I have to, again, make sure that, because I think at one time, Commissioner Workman worked with us when we were talking about this out at your place. So, I'll, you know, thank her for all of the support and the work that she's done in this regard. Ryan?
All right. Fantastic. So, I got several more slides, but I just wanted to get in front of you the policy direction that we're looking for tonight, which is basically, you wish to move forward with the Lake Marion Trail Greenway Gap Project. The greenway vision, this is Dakota County's vision for greenways all around the county. The orange line is the Lake Marion Trail area. It'd be 20 miles all the way from Burnsville Savage, Lakeville Farmington, link many regional destinations to the Minnesota River. The city of Burnsville supported this, the plan by resolution back in 2013. Our plans, Park Master Plan indicates connectivity to these types of things as the number-one goal. It's in our comp plan. So, it's very much plan-supported, I guess is the best way to phrase it. So, as we dial into what this project is, the, you can see the orange dashes around, that's the gap area. We built the Rose Bluff Greenway area to the north of Williams Drive. That's the area north of the green, the orange boxes. And then, we built the Kelleher segment to the south. So, we got this gap in the middle that we're trying to complete. If we can, it'll connect six city parks, including Rudy Kramer Preserve, Sunset Pond Park, as well as Kelleher Park. We already constructed that underpass under 42 on the train corridor. Like we described earlier, we'd be collaborating with the different master plans as would fit into all those. And a study we completed identified a preferred route. It is, I got another slide on what exactly that is, but it's not necessarily supported by the residents particularly who live around Sunset Pond and some who are here tonight, who would prefer that the Lake Marion Trail do not go around Sunset Pond Park and not, not be there because mostly they don't want more bicycles, bicyclists on going around the Sunset Pond Park. But I got a little more on that. How did we get some of this input? We had extensive overview or extensive engagement being done. We had two pop-up open houses back in 2021. We've met again virtually in March of '22 and '23. We've had websites, online ways to collaborate and discuss what it is that residents are finding, what they do and don't like about the alignment. We had a webpage. We discussed the trail at the Parks and Natural Resources Commission. We had a work session with you back, I think it was in 2021. And then, if we direct us to move forward with the trail, we, I promise we would have significant more engagement opportunities as we move forward. The final alignments have not been determined, the final width, that kind of thing. So, we would present opportunities for more engagement if you decide we do want to continue to move forward. So, this slide kind of goes through what that preferred route is. And there's a lot of things that were done on here to help address what residents were concerned about. The route and the safety kind of work together. As I discussed earlier, what the biggest concern, my understanding, the residents have would be adding more bicyclists to that trail is, makes it more difficult to have, just walk around, as many of them live there and can just walk, walk right out there now. So, more bikes create more potential conflicts, more safety concerns. Also, so, one of the ways that we could offset that would be to widen the trail out to help provide more space on the trail. Then, you get into some of the more of the natural areas. The original design, where the red line is there, had two trails, one further east of the existing, which would allow for bicyclists to simply bypass the multi-use trail and go on. There was a lot of concern about that because we'd be losing a lot of the plants, the natural upland flora that exists. So, what we've done to attempt to provide options is, so the red line at the bottom is Sunset Pond Parking Lot. And the, that's where the existing trail ends right now on the south side. And what we would like to do is to help bikers who just want to bypass it and go faster and not have to interact with the residents who are using the trail walking, is construct a new off-street trail on Burnsville Parkway before you get there. And then, go up to Judicial Road, which has very nice wide shoulders. So, if you are a biker who's comfortable and are looking to go quickly, you can be off-street on Burnsville Parkway and then on shoulders on Judicial Road. So, that would be an option that we're calling the Sunset Pond Bypass. So, then as we go north, but if you, if you do want to use the Sunset Pond, the red line, we would be widening the trail, softening the curves, making it more greenway. So, you're able to move at a nice rate of speed, but not too fast, that it works well for both users on bikes and for walkers. And that segment would also be widened out so that there would be enough ample opportunity to have bikers being on the outside of the trail and walkers on the inside. And then, as we progress north, you would use the existing trail that's already down there, that the green line. And that doesn't have nearly the traffic as the current trail around the pond. And then, maybe the key aspect to this whole project is a new acreage crossing of the Canadian Pacific Trail or the Dam Patch Line that would go up through Hollow Park up to Judicial Road. And then, we'd construct a new off-street trail on Judicial Road north up to Williams Drive. So, it would be an excellent addition to the greenway system. It would provide a bypass around the trail for those bikers who aren't, who want to move quicker. And we think we've done a good job of still meeting the intent of all the plans, which is to make connections, to make sure that Sunset Pond Park is connected to the greenway system while providing options for bikers who, who don't want to have to worry about interacting. So, the project cost to complete this would be about $2.5 million. We submitted an application through the Transportation Advisory Board for a federal grant. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful on that. So, we've been talking with Dakota County on other options to potentially get this done, which would be to segment out the project. The city would provide delivery of the improvements and the county would generally fund the improvements themselves. So, it's, it'd be like an 85-15. The cost of the improvements would be about 85% and the delivery would be about 15%. So, if we want to look further at this option, we would break it out into six segments. The northerly segment would be on Judicial Road there in the greenish color. And then, the Hollow Park CP Crossing is that purples color going down the hill. And then, the easterly trail around Sunset Pond Park. And then, there's the westerly side, there's the parking lot at Sunset Pond. And then, there's that bypass I described on Burnsville Parkway. So, those would be how we'd segment it up. We wouldn't deliver this project all at once. The most important aspect to get this project started would be to complete the Hollow Park CP Crossing because if that occurs, then our partners at Dakota County know that they can get across the railroad track and that we actually can have a full greenway all the way up from the north end of the project all the way down to the south. Otherwise, Dakota County isn't really interested in the project if there isn't a connection to Sunset Pond Park. It just would decrease the value of their greenway system. So, Dakota County's indicated they would have dollars available for us to engineer that first phase. Some of the challenges include, we'd have to get a permit from the Canadian Pacific Rail. There's Excel transmission lines in there above, gas lines below. We need an easement. And there's a lot of grade. So, this is a challenging segment to get done. And, but if we can get that done, it really sets us up to meet our plan goals, to meet the greenway plan goals. And we could have an effective greenway system that would go all the way down from Kelleher Park, all the way up to Sioux Fisher and making good connections all along the way. So, with that, there are residents here tonight, obviously, who may wish to provide some comments. But our question to you is, do you wish to continue forward with the Lake Marion Trail Greenway Gap Project even though we didn't get the federal funding? If yes, we'd bring back to you a joint powers agreement for consideration to engineer the, that one segment, the crossing, the Canadian Pacific line, along with getting up the hill in Hollow Park.
So, are they deciding as we...
I will, I will facilitate this. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll call you to the table when we need to ask our questions of staff first and then you can ask your questions. So, one of the things that I heard you say is that the county, since we were unsuccessful with the federal grant, the county is willing to fund the project at 85% of the cost.
So...
That's correct, Mayor.
Yes.
We have a practice or policy in place where when these relatively smaller projects come forward, when we have a partner like a city, we use what we call is our 85-15 cost-share policy. And there's some... fifteen cost share policy. And there's some flexibility in there whether the city, if, whether we share in the design costs or whether we share in proportionally in the, in the construction costs. But it works out to eighty-five, fifteen.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I know that we've been working on the Lake Marion Trail for quite a while. And I thank you for all the things that we have accomplished so far with the Lake Marion Trail down from Kelleher Park, all the way up to Sunset Pond. And that's a great trail because I walk it. And, and it's well done. And so thank you for the partnership. And I know this is important to the county. It also is important to us in terms of making sure that we have a healthy community and we have these trails. So this is from my perspective, with the county saying, okay, it's important enough that we'll fund it. We'll fund eighty-five percent of it. And I think, did you also say that you'll also take a look at some of the design costs if there is a need for that?
Well, I think we'll start, Mayor, council members, I, I think we'll, we'll start with the design. And then, so it'll be a step-by-step process in order to determine costs. And then each step, we go back to the county board to discuss, you know, the design details, the cost details. But this would be consistent with how we're building greenways throughout Dakota County.
Are there questions? Yes.
So as I understand this, the Sunset Pond Trail is the, was your preferred trail to begin with? And judicial became the alternative?
So we'd build both, our council member.
Oh, you would build both?
We'd build both. We'd improve the Sunset Pond Parking, or Sunset Pond Trail, and also build the bypass.
Okay. So we would have one trail that is off-street trail all the way, and the other one, we would put bicycles back on the streets again. Correct?
Yes. It'd be an option for those who would like to do it that way.
Any other questions for staff? Yes.
Well, I just, I appreciate staff listening to the residents, their concerns, and I want to hear more of that as well. But it's nice that there's an alternate route. Being a, a biker and a walker and an occasional electric scooter, but not here. I've been on a lot of trails. The, the one I spend, my wife and I spend a lot of time on, other than going into St. Hall on the Dakota Trail, is the Lake Minnetonka Trail that goes out from, like Excelsior area, out to, out further west. And we experience rollerbladers, walkers, scooters, a lot of bikes, all at the same time. And the wider the trail, makes it a lot better. From a comfortability standpoint, it is a little intimidating to be a walker and have bikers go flying by at high speeds. And we, as a biker, we try and slow down when we're passing pedestrians and we notify them well in advance that we're coming up because we've been in their shoes and been, you know, stunned when somebody goes flying by and they don't warn you. So it, it does require a lot of courtesy on everyone's part to share a trail and use it safely. But it is a public trail. And so inclusivity is important, that everybody gets to use it because it's public property. But there's got to be some, some rules. I like the fact that you've done the alternative for bikers because bikers generally like to go a little faster. They're not gonna, they're not gonna pedal so slow that they're having a hard time balancing to, to, to go really ultra-slow. But there will be some interest in going around Sunset Pond because it's, there's obviously some great nature and beauty there. So, you know, I don't, I, I think what you've proposed is a pretty good solution to alleviate, you know, forcing everybody on the one around the pond. That certainly would make me more comfortable if I lived there. But I certainly want to hear the rest. We did read the letter in the background that was sent in to Commissioner Workman and would love to hear everyone that wants to speak, share their specific concerns. Thank you.
Jared, do you have any comments or, or questions?
No, I don't. But I do want to hear from residents.
Sure. Absolutely. Vince?
Just a point of clarification on the Sunset Pond, the dedicated route along the pond. Would it be a dedicated bike lane that we're talking about? When we're talking about widening that path? Or we're just widening it to provide more room?
Councilmember Workman, members of the council, we would be striping it and delineating area for biking and an area for walking. But it would be one path.
Okay. All right. And thank you for being engaged with us for these many years. I mean, it, you have been there. You have given us your thoughts. I remember the one big meeting we had at the library and everybody was there before we did the southern part of the Lake Marion Trail. So that was really great. Whoever wants to speak, please come to the, yes. So come up where there's a, and take a seat where there's a microphone. And then some of us know you, but most don't. And then our residents, so please give your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Kay Graff, and I live on West Preserve Boulevard on the western shore of Sunset Pond. I've been a Burnsville resident for forty-eight years, and we built our second and current house on the pond. In nineteen eighty-nine, we moved in just as the park was being developed. We use the park for walking at least five times a week. We live right on it, so I have a wonderful view of users. So I have an intimate knowledge of park users. And we are, my husband and myself are park volunteers, so we help the naturals maintain the park.
Yeah, we thank you for that, Kay. You and Bob have been great volunteers for many, many years.
I'm here to ask that since the Greenway Plan Met Council Grant was not approved, if there could be more opportunity for citizens and input as to the inclusion of Sunset Pond in this project. And I hear now that probably that's not even going to be considered, but I still have to advocate this.
No, there will be more meetings, Kay. I don't know.
Because, you know, okay, so, you know, I know that the meetings that we've, that I've attended have only been on route options through Sunset Pond and never an option that it not be included. Okay. We live adjacent to the park and we have covenants that include restrictions on how our yards can, that align with the park can be used. There are more than sixty homes that encircle this park and many more homes in the housing developments nearby that will be affected. Years ago, when Burnsville wanted to widen the trail and add lights, we were given an opportunity to provide input through a community in-person meeting. This resulted in citizens being heard and the trail remaining unchanged. Now a huge change to the park has not been, doesn't seem to have given us this same kind of input. I believe the Greenway is a good project, but I don't believe it's right for Sunset Park. Sun Park Park will now be dual city and Burnsville, and, and county park, as I understand it, which probably will give us as citizens even less input. The Greenway is a linear park designed to provide non-motorized transportation and connect parklands. The online plan says it's a twenty-four hour trail with lighting. With the Greenway residents, citizens will have even less input. Sunset Pond does not fulfill the connection, and Judicial Road is needed to complete the Greenway. So why not just use Judicial for the connection and leave Sunset as is? Sunset could be accessible because there's a connection there. So people that wanted to come and, and see the park could because it's already connected. The Greenway may lose a short amount of parkland because, I mean, it's, they, but the, the Burnsville will lose a lot of benefits of the Sunset Pond. Sunset Pond is more of a destination park with a curving ten-foot wide trail that approximates the shoreline. The design makes it ideal for pedestrians so that those who walk or drive up can end up back where they start. And it puts it in competition with the linear trail design of the Greenway. The design and heavy use also makes it less desirable for, for hardcore speedy bikers per input given by bikers. The way it is designed now, they, they find that the curving trail with, with a ten-foot width is not as desirable. The current plan to widen the trail to fourteen feet all around the park and stripe it with six feet for walkers and eight for bikers will make it seem to be a lap trail for bikes and will give them turf rides greater than walkers. I think, you know, if they don't want, if they want to ride their laps off, off-road, they're just going to go around and around Sunset Pond. Bikes will probably become more problematic as more electronic bikes are available. I believe this plan will irreversibly change this park for current residents and citizen users. It is used mostly by pedestrian users for exercise, dog walking, families, combining exercise and socializing, parents and grandparents with strollers, wagons, tricycles, learner bikes, wildlife and plant enthusiasts, and those with physical or developmental disabilities. And I have someone here who's representing daycares who walk their kids around it. Changing and widening the trail result in destruction of some of the restored prairie and some thirty-year-old tree, oak trees. And seriously, there are parts of the trail that for going around are not really seeming to have room for it. It will make the park less aesthetically pleasing with a wider trail all around. I feel like I'll be looking at a road in my backyard. In some places, there isn't enough room for, yeah, I've said that already. I'm sorry. Please allow a chance for citizen input and an in-person community meeting before this plan is carried out. Sorry.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Paul Barron. Just want to thank you. This, this whole process has, you know, it's, it's been zoomed. We, we haven't had a lot of face-to-face on any of this. So thank you for kind of sneaking us in tonight. I, Kay said everything. If this truly did start in 2013, so much has changed since 2013. And, you know, one of the biggest things that we've seen change is the speed that already exists on the pond with the advent of all the e-bikes. You know, for better or for worse, it's great. And I was running today and I saw a couple, a couple couples out, you know, what, you know, enjoying the pond, enjoying their bikes, just out, you know, enjoying the, the scenery. That's not the case with all of them. We, we do have a current speed issue. If we do this path, the, the gap on one side of the pond, people don't come to the pond to go through. They come to the pond to do laps. It's going to create speed on one side that is going to be funneled into the other side and not, you know, have any kind of way to, you know, adapt to that. I really want to thank Deputy Manager McPhee. We had a conversation the other day. He came out and walked the path with us, you know, made the comments that, you know, curves control speed, path width control speed. You know, the wider you make it, the straighter you make it, the faster they're going to go. We have, you know, all of the neighbors are out walking dogs, you know, Kay, you know, and using the path. And if we make, make the, you know, make the gap connection out on Burnsville Parkway and Judicial, keep the pond as a scenic bypass, you know, have, you know, welcome the bikers. We can't, you know, bikers need a place to come to, but have it be available with some guidelines, with some rules as to how to coexist with what is currently happening on the path. Because when you're back there, you know, with the speed, it truly is dangerous. I was gonna, you know, walk, I have a paralyzed dog that got run over by a rollerblader back on the path. And it's just, you know, my dog, he's a, you know, he still gets his ear scratched and shows up for his kibble. But, you know, if, we're, we're just asking for bigger and worse accidents by turning this into a racetrack and not acknowledging how the, the path truly is being used. So thank, thank you very much.
Before these comments were made, I, I was looking at this map and, and thinking some of the trails that, that I've ridden or walked on. And, and sometimes there's a opportunity to go around some particular area, do a lap or a loop or whatever around a scenic area and get back onto the main trail. So I think that idea of a scenic bypass makes sense to me. But the other thing is, I, I think there's a lot of truth to making one side very attractive with the width. And, and I do agree, once you're on that, you're just going to want to do a loop of the whole pond. It's not going to be a pass-through. You're really going to want to just do the whole pond because the scenery is what draws you in and what, and why you want to stay there. So making only half of that really wide and leaving the other half narrow, to Hugo's point, as he made, I mean, the narrow portion would slow people down. The wider section, although there's a lot of turns in it, could speed traffic up. So is, and, and I think there's also a point that was made, man, that you said, currently you can get to this path. Without it being part of this Dakota-wide trail, you can still get to it. Can you point out where, Ryan, on the, Mr. Peters on the map?
I'm going to go to Ryan because, yeah, because the bikers don't need to be on, along that, the pond side of it, right, where the red line. You have directed them to go on a judicial side, to move along.
A couple of comments, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Keely. So the green line is where the, the east, we're called the east side, but that would be the primary area for the Lake Marion Trail. But we do need to replace the orange as well. And that's the west side. And the intent would be to make a uniform width all the way around.
Oh.
So if I didn't explain that, I apologize.
It is going to be widened around the entire, not just one side. Okay.
But I, if you, if you don't mind, the reason we, we based widening of the trail on the input we received. The input received was that the trail's, the ten-foot is going to be too narrow for bikers and walkers to exist. So that was what we had come up with to identify it. So it almost appears that the proposed solution is now turning into the conundrum because it's wider and straighter. So from a staff standpoint in Dakota County, you don't, Dakota County owns no for, trails wider than ten feet. This would be it. So we are more than willing to, from a staff standpoint, to recommend going back to ten feet if that would help reduce the potential for speeding. But that was, the comments we heard was that there wasn't enough room for bikers and walkers to exist in the same. So that is how we came up with this idea. But yes, so the, the west side of the trail's actually in worse shape than the east side. So one way or the other, we do have to make improvements, but we want to do the whole thing at once. We don't want to do half the trail and not the other half of the trail. So that's the reasoning behind that. So I apologize if I didn't discuss the fact that we are planning on, sooner rather than later, getting to replacing the west side as well.
I'm going to go to Dan Kay and then Dan G.
Well, just to kind of finish the communication, is it feasible to make the trail system follow judicial and allow the Sunset Pond portion of the trail accessibility, but not where the widest trail is? So people can cut off if they choose to. But I would also suggest signage, that this is a shared narrower trail and that bike speed limits are restricted to something that's more reasonable. So they can enjoy it, but not become a safety threat on the loop around the lake. But, but the main trail, just continue on the Burnsville Parkway up to Judicial and up. So that would be the quote, "main regional trail." And this just remain a city scenic bypass or scenic offset or whatever. Is that, is that, is that feasible under any circumstance?
Ryan?
Our councilmember Keely, members of the council, the key to this thing being part of the Lake Marion Trail, as I discussed, is getting across the railroad track there and making connections. So the county's plan is trying to make connections to high-value parks, things that are, and that is why it's shown going to Sunset Pond. So does it, do we need to build a trail? So does it, do we need to build a trail that goes there? We do not. It just, it would meet the city's Parks Master Plan goal, the number-one goal is to make connections with trails. The county's Lake Marion Trail plan discusses going. So if we want to get the county to be involved, we would need to make the connection at where the orange line is. And then it would include the Sunset Pond trail. And if you would like to hear more from John and I.
And it looks as though there's two entry points, north side and south side. Because at the, at the south side for that Burnsville Parkway, the green line goes over and then connects down there as well. So is there two points of access?
There is a trail right now where the green is that already exists. So what we would do is we would sign it when you got to the new off-street trail section to go. To go, that is an option to get up to Williams Drive. And it would also say to continue on to Sunset Pond Park, you would go straight ahead. So it would be an option for bikers to take.
And you can sign it that only bikers get on the, get on the proposed on-street shared shoulder.
Madam Mayor, I believe it'd be open to walkers.
Yeah, I don't know, we would restrict it. I just think that maybe signing that the Sunset Pond Trail is heavily, you know, pedestrian-walking traffic and that biking traffic, scooter traffic, et cetera, would have to respect a slower speed than what they might be doing on the other trail because the other trail is encompassing, you know, part of the road too. I don't know, I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I think there's a good best, best-faith attempt, if there's signage there, to, if you want to go to the left and go around Sunset, that's fine. But that's off the main trail and it's at a slower speed. Is that feasible, the post-signs for, with a motorized or pedaled vehicle speed?
I think I will go to Ryan and our, from the county, and then I'll go, because Dan G. had his hand up before. And Kara, I will recognize you, Kay, I will. I have to make sure the people who are, have their hands up also have their questions asked. So Ryan, did you answer that question?
Councilmember Keely, we could certainly sign it absolutely to slower speeds, but it's very difficult to enforce. So I won't.
It's the honor system out there everywhere. We can only sign it and give direction, but we can't, right?
I don't know if the county has experience with this type of situation elsewhere in the greenway system.
Well, we are aware of issues, and when we are aware of issues, we patrol and we sign. I mean, those are our two tools we use. So it's not common. Probably the example where we've had most conflict is up in Minn. DOTA Heights on the Big Rivers Regional Trail, which is an old railroad bed. So it encourages higher use or higher speed.
Okay, Dan G.
No, I didn't. When we could do that connection at the railroad crossing, people will have the option to go up Judicial or go over to Sunset Pond, correct?
Yep.
And are we anticipating more bike traffic from the south once that connection is completed?
Do you want to discuss the percentage?
I'm not sure I know the answer.
What I've heard is that greenways in general have about a fifty percent bikers and fifty percent walkers.
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking out loud is, are we going to create more traffic for that area, whether we widen the path on Sunset Pond or not? And we may be directing more bikers into that narrow path over at Sunset Pond while doing some to Judicial. And we're still going to have that safety issue on Sunset Pond if bikers, if we're bringing more bikers into the area. And quite frankly, if I'm biking in that area, I'm going to bike the pond. I'm not going to go up Judicial because that's what I want to see is the pond. And so that's, that's, I'm trying to figure out if you guys have looked at that, if you think there's going to be more traffic brought in, because, I mean, there's a reason we're doing this.
Yeah, Ryan.
Councilmember Guston, we would anticipate more traffic.
So we could conceive it would be throw more at Sunset Pond whether we widen the trail or not, correct?
Correct. I mean, you can see there's a whole neighborhood there northeast. This would open that up for many, it's, right now there are people who it's like a Billy Goat Trail, and they just walk and then they have to get over the tracks, and it's not a good way to get down there. This would make this area so much more accessible to many residents up there.
So this is going to become a safety issue on Sunset Pond then for the widening of the trail?
Councilmember Guston, with more people, there would be more interactions. I don't, there's no way to.
Thank you.
If I may, just a comment about wider trails. Having ridden on trails like the Dakota West or whatever, the wider the trail, far more safer because there's more room, right, to share the trail. Narrow trails are very difficult to go around people that are walking or rollerblading when you're on a bike. And so it does make it, however, that naturally slows you down. It just forces the issue that you have to slow down, or at least most people do. Some don't.
Not the twenty-five.
Kara?
So, and you probably said this, but I didn't quite understand why, why, why are, other than to widen it and to soften the curves, why are we redoing the loop around the pond? Is it because it's gone to hell or?
Councilmember Scholes, the west side is in poor shape. The east side, to be part of the greenway, would need to remove some of the really sharp corners to make it safe for users of the greenway system. Does that make sense? Right now, some of the corners are too sharp to meet the standards of Dakota County's greenway.
Okay, okay, so that's what I'm looking for. So it's a county standard of doing that, and if we don't do that, then the county is like, looks like a nice project, but we're not giving you money.
Well, yeah, it's probably not, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember. So it's, we're fairly flexible on our design standards. There's a few, two or three curves, I think we looked at, we've had a challenge with, that would cause problems of bikes crossing the center line of the, of the trail potentially or not being able to control themselves around the curves. So, you know, I think overall, we want a project that works for the community. And, you know, so we're trying to, you know, work as much as we can with the city and the neighborhood on the design that works best.
Okay, Kay.
Oh, I guess I have, I have a question of Ryan and John. How long of a route is it up Sunset and over? It's probably only a little over a mile, right?
Yes, Ms. Graff, this segment is one point five, the whole.
You know, and it just seems like for that short of a segment of a greenway, I just can't understand why it has to go through Sunset. I am, there's somebody else, I guess.
Okay, and give us your name and.
Can I do it from here? I got a lot of voice.
Yeah, good, okay.
My name is Jack Akervik, and I live right on the pond. I live almost right next to the parking lot we view out into that corner. The playground is there, the little kids are playing there all year round.
So you're on the east side.
The coolest weather, they run back and forth. There's the daycare center, and they come out there during the school year. And I bike and walk around this pond. I bike less than I used to for several reasons. First, the goose poop is dangerous as all can be. Your bike will slide just on that alone. And then the geese are walking back and forth on the pond, and they can get really nasty if you get close to their brood. I can tell you that's happened. And another thing unfortunately is, there are a lot of people that don't speak English. So as a biker, when you go on your left, they either don't understand you or they move to the left. So I don't bike around this pond as much as I used to because it's flat, out danger. I don't care how wide you put it. If you get a family of six out there walking and you're on your derailleur bike and you go on your left and they all move left, what are you going to do? We're going to have that big accident where somebody's going to get hurt because this is not, I've, I've gone around all the other biking places all over the Twin Cities. And I'm from northern Minnesota, and there's nothing more beautiful down here in this farmland than this little pond. The nature and the changes of the different types of trees and the topography are stunning. The wildlife, the turtles crossing the path, that happens all the time. You've got all the wildlife that crosses by. This is not really even a bike path. If you do it, you do it at your own risk, you truly do. And I think with the graduated hill going up there before you hit the top of that plateau and the curves all the way around, it's not a bike path. You can ride a bike, but it really is a hiking or a walking path. You see strollers, you see seniors like myself with my cane or my walker, and there's people in wheelchairs, and they come from all over, the nursing homes. There's people that are mentally disabled that are out there in big groups that are enjoying the scenery. This doesn't fit your typical-type greened attitude, in my opinion. I've lived here for almost twenty years, right on the pond. And I think it's a travesty, and I'll be perfectly blunt, it's all about the money. I think if you had got your federal funding, we wouldn't be talking about this right now. But the county's saying, we want green, and the only way you're going to get money from us is you keep it green, irrespective of the thousands of people that use this thing. Every dad look out, today there was probably thirty-five cars in that lot, and they are going on the pond. They come from all over the area to walk this beautiful gem in Burnsville. And I think this is one of the greatest assets that Burnsville has is this Sunset Pond. And I would say that even if I didn't live on the pond. In fact, I told my wife, if we move and I have to go into a townhome, we still will come back here to walk this beautiful pond. And so I think really, you know, we always talk about, you know, urbanizing or making things bigger and better, tearing down the old, building a new, and it just goes on and on. And I think in this case, I think what was said is keep it on judicial. If you want to put a sign, you want a scenic ride, risk the goose poop and the seniors and the people that don't speak English, go for it. But if you want to get from point A to point Z, stay on judicial.
Vince? Yeah, I'll come to you, I'm going to go to him first, and then I'll come back to you.
Just a couple of questions. There's been some comments about e-bikes and e-scooters, and Tanya's not here, but does our ordinance allow electronic vehicles on these walking paths?
Ryan?
Yes, they're not prohibited. They are not prohibited.
They're not permitted.
No, they're not prohibited.
They're not prohibited.
Oh, they're not prohibited, okay.
So that might be a discussion for another day. And I forgot my second question. Oh, and Dan, maybe you can elaborate on this. But when I biked a little bit, I downloaded apps which kind of guided me to certain biking trails when I lived in West Bloomington for a few years. Do, does the county or do we manipulate those trails through those biking apps at all? Is that something that we could do to direct traffic? And I don't know how many people use those apps, I feel like they're fairly popular. But is that something that's ever been discussed throughout this process as a way to direct traffic?
We have a biking guide, but I don't know that it's associated with any type of app. So we have maps and guides, but I don't believe we use an app. I don't know if the county has a greenway app.
We, we do not. I mean, a lot of those apps are based upon third-party.
I think a lot of it's user input.
User input, Google Maps, those things, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it might be something to consider.
Yeah, I'm going to go to your neighbor. Yes, come to the table and give us your, yeah, she had her hand up.
My name is Renee. I own a home on the east side. My backyard faces the east side trail. And my question is more about safety and accountability. I have noticed from when I first bought my home till now recently, the number of people that let their dogs run free off-leash in this area has quadrupled. They run up in our yards, they cause, they get aggressive with my dogs that are in my yard. They don't call them back. Not, this is not related to bikes, but I've called the police department, I've called animal control, and it's not a priority, and I understand that. But you do this, who do we call, and what happens when it's, again, not a priority?
Okay, thank you. Kay, you had more to say?
Oh, I guess the other thing that I brought up on the last virtual meeting with, about the greenway was that, what I understand, that that little joiner over the railroad tracks is a really expensive part of this trail. And I asked, could at least they, they do the judicial part first so that we could, they could see how it worked? I wondered if the bike trail that over the railroad had to be quite that deluxe. I mean, maybe it could, could it be a bridge or something so it goes over the trail so you wouldn't have to do all the, the digging up the utilities and stuff?
Yeah, Ryan, you know, tonight, all of those details are more meetings to come.
Right.
Yeah, more meetings about design, more meetings about which path, more meetings about all of that. What our staff and the county is asking us to do is, do we support and continue the work with Dakota County to complete the gap? That's what we're asked to do tonight. So if we say go on, then all of the other details are going to be defined during all of the meetings that you will have. That's coming up. Okay, I'm going to go to Paul, and then I'll come back to Kara.
I just have one, one last thing now.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Okay.
You know, one thing is that the people at home can't see you over there.
We have seen a significant increase with the connection under forty-two with bikers coming in, which is still wonderful. I mean, you know, come use the park. You know, the greenway system, and I've, a lot of us have ridden on greenway systems, this system still doesn't go anywhere, it stops at thirteen. If that connection ever is made somewhere down the road, it's going to bring a huge influx of people passing through the park, which is going to pass through our park. And instead of preserving what we have back there now, add more curves. Add, you know, bring some Murphy Hanrahan obstacles in there, you know, make the bikes, you know, slow down, you know. Preserve what we have back there instead of widening it, making it a racetrack, making it something that is, you know, more dangerous, inherently more dangerous as opposed to taking it the other direction and protecting what we have. And, you know, down the road, if the greenway does get connected across the river, they've got Judicial to Burnsville or Parkway to Judicial, and they can get there, and we can still have our park.
Yeah, your voices are all important in the, in the decision-making as we go forward.
Well, and that, we haven't felt that. We've, you know, beings that this has been done through Zoom, through COVID, we, you know, park meetings. This is wonderful to actually, you know, be here and be heard. But we do need, you know, moving forward, we need to feel like we are being heard.
We're going to make sure that all of the meetings will be in-person so that you all can be doing that. That is, our goal is to make sure that we have connections and we're engaging and that we're problem-solving together. That is the goal. I'm going to go to Kara first, Kay, and then I'll come back to you. Oh, I'm sorry. Then, before I get back to Kay, I will go to you first, Kara.
So is, is this the one that the railroad already said, yeah, we're cool with this?
Ryan?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Scholes, we've had some luck with the railroad. They allowed us to remove the crossing on Burnsville Parkway and on South Cross Drive. So that gives us confidence that we would be able to obtain a crossing here. We don't officially have a permit or something like that. But there's, there's reason to believe we could be successful.
Okay, so they, they've said yes on a couple of other railroad-type things. Therefore, that gives you like the warm fuzzy that they'll do her again, right?
As warm and fuzzy as we get with the railroad.
Yeah, I know what you mean. The other question that I have, so we're trying to, we have a satellite map up. Could you help us find, find where this railroad crossing is?
At Howell Park, I can't even find the track.
Yeah, right there.
So I, no, I get that that's a drawn map. We're looking at a satellite? Like, I want to see it with my eyeballs.
Ryan?
If you're looking at the basketball court and playground there, you go first. you go further to the west, you go down a hill to the west.
Yeah, and the tracks are, are the tracks still there?
Yeah.
Are they just overgrown, green, so where they, you can't even see the tracks anymore?
You can see the separation of the tree line.
Yeah, yeah, you can follow the tree line, but no tracks. They're, it's so overgrown. So the track has obviously been not used for such a long time that it's overgrown. Hence, they allowed us to remove the crossing because there's no train traffic to control there anymore.
That's mercury, a hundred percent.
Okay.
Is this the same line that the legislature is trying to get reopened?
I think, isn't this the part of the Dan Patrick?
I'm sorry, we're not allowed to.
Yeah, we're going, we're going down a different direction. Let's stay focused here. Yes, please come to the table and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, my name is John Clavens. My wife Amber is behind me. We both have been residents of Burnsville since nineteen eighty-nine, right? It's been a while. So we live on the east side of the pond as well, right off the trail. And I just want to say thanks to the council members too for listening to us and hearing us out. Ryan, thanks for taking some of our calls and, and connecting with us too. You know, I think the importance Mr. Akidric had mentioned too is this is really a gem. Uh, this park is beautiful. We just, my wife and I just have relatives actually from overseas who came to stay with us for a week. We walked the pond a couple Sundays ago, a pair of eagles nesting over us, we've got the swans. And it's just really a gorgeous gem in Burnsville. And I just want to make sure we preserve and protect that to the greatest degree possible, as well as those that use the pond, especially folks that are handicapped or have, you know, need a trail, that it's a safe trail without a lot of high-speed bikers coming across that pathway. So, uh, not anti-bike or anything like that, but I just want to make sure again, we don't lose the gem and the perspective that we have there as well. It's really a blessing to have this place, and we don't want to, we don't want to cause any more harm or damage to it. I think Councilmember Keely, your emphasis too on walking on a multi-use trail. And I worked in St. Paul for many years, a lot of bikes coming through and walkers. And sometimes the concern that I saw there was the bikers, the mindset sort of takes over, it becomes a bike freeway. And then for the walkers, you end up kind of being intimidated or pushed off to the side. And we just don't want that to occur. And, and I know that requires good signage, good communication, um, all those kind of important factors as well. The other piece is, I will, I say the, uh, we as neighbors, I think, would love to come together and maybe have a larger discussion with more people as well. I know during the COVID times, it was hard to get everybody together. But I'm sure there's other interested parties that would love to sit down and have a broader conversation with, with the council and with the mayor and with, with the parks staff as well and with the county. So, thank you for your time. I know it's gonna be a long night for you, so I'll turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Our intent is to make sure that we problem-solve together. So whatever that is. Uh, Kay, you have more to say?
Well, I guess I, I just had, um, one more thing about when I talked about going judicial first, as I thought, you know, in case the railroad would ever become available, it's just the most ideal place to put it, to the, the, the Greenway. And, and I don't know, when the last virtual meeting we had, the Liz Workman was saying that there was a change in a gag order or something for the railroad use and...
Well, they're still debating that at the legislature. It hasn't been passed yet.
But, but I mean, I'm thinking, uh, going that way would give that advantage that you'd have, you could connect and still have, if the railroad would become available, use that route. Because that would eliminate all the problems with, with the use of the Sunset Pond Park. And I just, I guess it just breaks my heart having, uh, all of us got our houses on this Burnsville Park. And now we find that it's gonna become also partially a county park. And obviously, it will change usage. So that's all I can say, which is... I'm not usually an activist, but this, this is really in my heart. I just really feel it's wrong for Sunset Pond. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other thoughts?
I guess I'm just conflicted here because it sounds like the widening of the path was intended or was done based on feedback from the neighborhood. But tonight, I'm hearing that the widening of the path is not wanted, so I'm not...
We were offered, you know, two paths. So the, the initial plan that came up was, we'll build a completely separate road next to the path. The park is so, we don't have much green space back there. And why we're even thinking about putting more asphalt back there is, to me, completely counterintuitive to, to maintaining a good park. Initially, the plan was to, to build a separate road parallel to the path that the bikes would have. Safety-wise, fantastic. Green space-wise, uh, more trees, more, you know, it would completely all, it, it would, then we would have two small roads through our park as opposed to one. The, in, in our conversations, they offered, well, how about we just widen the path? And we go, oh, well, that's better, you know, it's, and the more we had to think about it, that's not best because that's still creating a faster, you know, racetrack for the bikes. So in, you know, talking with Mr. Mcfee, you know, curves, width, you know, you know, there are things that can be done to control bike speed and are being done successfully in other parks that still allow coexistence between the, you know, bikes and pedestrians. And yes, we can't, we're not policing it now. There's no policing the e-bikes. There's not, you know, it's, um, it's just happening. But if we, you know, if we can incorporate some of these things to maintain the, the natural aspect of the park as opposed to turn it in, into a freeway, um, that would be great. So the, the widening in the path was kind of a Band-Aid that was, you know, suggested to us. And yes, we all kind of said, oh, not a bad idea, until we found out that it was going to be eight feet for the bikes, six feet for, for the pedestrians striped. And all the way around the pond, most of which on the west side, there's not room for it. So it's, it, once again, kind of just a communication gap, but thank you for the question.
Okay. So if there are no other input, Council, all of the staff is asking us this evening is, should we continue the work towards completing the gap? Now, completing the gap doesn't mean that it has to go through Sunset. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and a lot of meetings where we have promised the community that all of the work that we'll be doing is engagement and that they are going to be a part of the decision-making process. So I know that, um, the city and the county will make sure that we have those meetings, those in-person meetings, if you're given direction to continue. But it's up to the council, your pleasure. Uh, staff and the county is asking, should they continue with the work uh, towards completing the gap, uh, in the Lake Marion Trail Greenway? And then whatever that is, and the decisions of where it's going to go through is between the meetings that you all have with the members of the community. So, but Council, yes, Vince?
I guess at this point, I would be interested in what the county's response to maintaining a more, I'm gonna use the word zigzag path, um, around the pond to alleviate the high-speed biking is, um, in trying to more efficiently direct bikers to the judicial path. Well, you can't prevent bikes on the pond, but as Paul said, there's probably ways to reduce speeds. You know, I, I guess I would be curious to know if the county would still be interested in this partnership if, you know, the expedited trail was diverted like we see tonight. And then maintaining, uh, the pond path as a slower, maybe less desirable path for, you know, avid bikers that are going faster.
Yes, please, Brian.
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember. So we're open to any design to partner and, and create a workable solution. You know, I think the design options that, uh, we could look at our slower bike speed through the, through the park. Uh, we, we just did a similar project in West St. Paul where we didn't design it to our full design standard for that reason, um, to keep speeds slower, to minimize impact to some oak trees. You know, th- those are the types of things we do throughout the system to, uh, address concerns.
Well, and I think it would seem reasonable that we could probably try to find those same solutions here because it sounds like the concern is the high speeds and the safety. And if there's a way or a path forward, pardon the pun, um, that we could do that here, I feel like that would make the neighborhood happy. I'm a little disappointed Steve Benke isn't here though.
Well, I think they're all going to be part of the decision-making because, you know, I hear what, uh, uh, our community members are saying that, even that path through Sunset Pond, and I, I'm one of the ones who walk around there. I just drive and park and walk around the park. You, you could also just say that if you're going to use the Greenway, you walk. Um, and, and then if you're a biker, you get on the, um, on the judicial side and use that if that is your transportation of, that you're going to be using, if it's your legs or your wheels. So that depends on what you're gonna do. But the thing is, you're going to have these meetings. You're going to hear the voices of the people who live around there and, um, make a decision on how that's going to be, whether you widen it or keep it at ten like it is now. Uh, I think those are all the things that, decisions that have to be made. The only question tonight, Council, is do you want the city and council, and county to continue with the Lake Marion Greenway? We've already completed the southern part of that Greenway from Callaher Park all the way up to Sunset. Yeah?
Yes, I think overall the project needs to move forward. I'm, I'm in agreement with the suggestion that we should, uh, work on the new off-street trail off of Williams uh, to judicial and the new off-street off of Burnsville Parkway first.
Yeah.
Um, because that's, um, the piece of the trail that doesn't exist that would make the connection using judicial. The, the side access around the park is, to me, an ancillary benefit to the trail, but that's not part of the main, uh, you know, I guess the main driver of the trail to make the connection to go north. It's like, it doesn't have to go around Sunset Pond just to be able to get the connection to go north or south. It can, with the two new off-street trail connections and then using the shoulder on judicial, you can get from the north to the south or the south to the north, right?
Because here's the other part. Ryan, you and I have walked the Rose Bluff Park. That's very steep. I don't know if any bikers want to go on unless they want to break their necks, right? Going down, it's very steep. It is also even harder to come back up. I mean, you can make it, and made it, but coming back up from, uh, from the Kramer Nature Preserve and coming back up to St. James is a pretty steep climb, right?
Yes, Mayor.
I don't know if you want to pedal a bike up that hill. It's, it's a very steep hill.
Yeah. Put the switchbacks in to make it possible, but yes, it doesn't work out.
Yeah. So, yeah. Um, you want to come here and give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Steve Aldrich. I'm in twelve hundred, West one hundred and fifty, East Street. Well, that question just confused me that you came up with. So you're telling me nobody's gonna want to take the other route because there's a hill?
No, no, no. That, I said that, uh, no, that's not. The, this, this path goes all the way down, and so that part on the north side is already done. That's already done.
When you, when he was just saying they could not use the park and go the other way, and you had mentioned that the hill is too steep.
I was just saying that, you know, the Greenway, all the way from Callaher, this is the gap because it's all, uh, the Rose, um, the Rose Park part is already done. And I'm just saying that that is already done, but it's very steep because it goes all the way down and it goes over to, um, Kramer Nature Preserve. Yeah, no, I'm not, yeah, I just said it's, it's also...
The way it sounded was if they don't go around the pond, then they'd have to go up.
I'm just saying the, the part of it is all done over to that side.
That was my guess.
And I'm just saying that part of it is, on the, on the south side, it is from Sunset Pond going all the way to Callaher Park. That's a beautiful walk. I've done that many times, okay, and, and coming back. The north part of the Greenway, that's a tough one. Yeah, on the other side of, uh, of McCall, on the other side of McCall. You, you can, you, you, you park at St. James and then you can enter that, that part.
I'm not familiar with that.
No.
That was, the way you made it sound was, everybody will have to take the pond because the other way is too steep.
No, 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 no. This is the gap from,
All right, thank you.
Sunset to going over to Rose Bluff. Yeah, no, no, no. I'm just talking about the ones that are completed and the ones that I've used, so. So Councilmember Keely, you said, okay, um, um, direct stack to continue the work with the county and continue work with our, with our residents.
And, and my suggestion is focus on those two legs that use judicial road.
The judicial road.
As the first priority.
Yeah. So that's one way of looking at, uh,
Completing the connection without forcing.
Yeah, to close that gap.
Right now anyway, but it sounds like the ponds, trail needs to be upgraded at some point. The west side.
Because here are the, the task. If we, uh, can, direct stack to move forward, then, uh, the next thing is that we enter into an engineering JPA with Dakota County, so, uh, Kara?
How long do we have before we need to give the county our decision on this?
We started in twenty thirteen.
Mayor, yeah, uh, Councilmember. Uh, no, no real urgency. One of the things we felt like, um, in, in the feasibility study at least, was the railroad seemed amenable to taking a look at a crossing. Uh, so we thought, well, we should probably work with them now versus wait a year or two years. Um, so I think there was a little urgency about trying to address that railroad crossing, uh, opportunity. But otherwise, there's nothing really driving, uh, this schedule.
What happens if they take that line back?
Yeah, it's, it's, good question.
Because I know our legislature's feeling pretty feisty.
Yeah, Ryan?
Um, um, Councilmember Scholes, the, uh, if we got a permit, there may be language in it that says if they do decide to, um, reactivate the line, that the crossing would go away. It's possible that that would be a condition, but it would take them a long time to decide to use it. An incredible investment to make it travel-worthy again.
They seem to think they have a lot of money and they don't particularly care about things working at an early process. So, like, I'm just saying, like, we're, we're going to be in a two-year period of speed where projects that are desired to even have a chance of going ahead, they're going to try to maximize their opportunity, right? I get the project. I get wanting to put that little connector piece in there. I understand the time seems good because the railroad seems minimal. The concern I have is, concern I have is with the residents here and, and what they're saying. I don't have a resolution for that. It's a competing interest thing.
There is no reason if we direct you to move forward and we put a JPA in place, if we have all of these meetings and the design comes up to what the residents are saying would be the best design, would that cause the county to say that you're not going to go forward with it? I think that's part of the issue is that, what is the threshold from the county? I mean, it's either we move forward and you continue to work to find the best solution and enter the JPA. But I would say that when we do enter a JPA, there has to be decision points for both the city and the county to say, we don't move forward. If it doesn't meet the county's criteria or our residents and what their input is, is not heard. Yeah.
The, the staff proposal would be to focus on the railroad crossing. So then that would be the segment that we're worried about.
Criteria.
Yep, and then if we are successful there and get it built, then we move on to the rest of it, including all of the interaction. That would be community engagement and that sort of thing. Because, so that would be the, that's the proposal at this point. Certainly, we'd have some comments here, but we wouldn't be looking at the part around the Sunset Pond Trail as much as this. Because if we don't get this done, then the Lake Marion Trail as designed.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. Kay?
I guess I, I wanted to clarify something that I thought I heard in the beginning of this when John was talking. I felt that I heard that if Sunset Pond isn't included, it's a no-go. And I'm, I don't know.
I don't hear that.
You don't?
No.
I mean, because.
I, I did not hear that.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying there are a lot of decisions with all of you being part of that process.
And that's what I'd love to hear.
Yeah, that, no, no. That's, that's not what, yeah. Yes, Paul?
If we do Burnsville Parkway to Judicial, do we even need the train bridge?
I don't know. Until we move forward and staff and the county do their work. I mean, that detail has not been, you know, explored. And we don't do that. All, all we do is give direction and then it's up to our staff, who are the subject matter experts, who do the work.
No, I was just, with the importance, and I, I understand, you know, if the time is right and that's necessary, but if we don't, if that's not the true connection, do we even need to worry about the train, the, the train tracks?
Well, you know, until you all get together and we have this discussion with the county and put a joint powers agreement in place, we won't know what those critical thresholds are.
And also just with that connection, if we designate that on, on Burnsville Parkway Judicial, we already have a speed problem with bikes doing laps on the pond now.
I think those are all of the issues that you all need to work together. And, you know, we'll have people from the city and people from the county all listening and working together.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Vince? Do we move forward with the county?
Yes. And I'm hearing John say that they've done trails in other communities that have addressed speed issues. And I have no reason to believe that they won't do that here based on the feedback we've received tonight. And if we need to get this railroad crossing addressed now, then that's what we're discussing and there's more work to do for the remainder of the project. But it seems like tonight, our main focus is the crossing at Howell Park.
Thing is, the main thing is that do we move forward with the county so that a JPA can be put in place? It's in the JPA where all of those things will be defined.
Yes.
So you're okay moving forward with the county?
Yes, based on what I've heard from John tonight, I'm comfortable with moving forward.
That we'll be meeting with our residents.
This isn't the end-all by any means. I mean, it doesn't sound like anyways.
Huh?
This doesn't sound like the end-all by any means. That we've still got a lot of work left to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Because all, all they're asking is, do we proceed? Okay? Dan G?
I believe we should move forward, stay engaged with the community and bring back the best design, the best plan to make it happen.
Yeah.
And that's going to take some time, and I know that, but it's moving, which is what we need, we should be doing. We've already built things like tunnels and things like that to make this happen.
Well, I believe in our processes that when our residents take part, that all of us come together and solve this problem, then we're going to get a better product. But until we say move forward, we won't know. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I, I appreciate the fact that you want to go forward and I understand the reasoning why you want to go forward. But I didn't even know about this meeting. It wasn't for my neighbor Paul letting me know. I didn't know that this was happening. I didn't know anything about it. And I didn't see anything in print. I didn't see anything from the local paper.
So.
And this just isn't, I'm sorry, this isn't just the residents that live around the pond. This little pond is, tracks people from Eagan, from Rosemont. They drive miles to come to this. And I think there's some way if we can put out in the paper that we're going to have a meeting, I would suspect that room is going to be full of residents that'll tell you how much they love this pond.
And it is our process to put all of this out there. And our staff will make sure that the meetings are announced to all of you. I believe that we have all of your addresses. And so that you can be a part of it. So, this is about Burnsville, and so you're important, okay? And that's what we're going to be focusing on, is what you believe. It is about connections. It is about engaging all of you in decision. We've done this. We've done this in cleaning up lakes. We've done this in the heart of the city. So we know that when people come together and give their input, we have a better design. But unless we move forward and understand where we're going to go, you know, I, tonight, you all have said that the pond is important. I remember when the pond was built, it was just a pond. It was overgrown with all kinds of stuff. And we, the city has done a wonderful job of cleaning it up and creating a methodology that has created this pond, you know? And everything from all of the different water bodies around Burnsville all empty into that pond and then goes down into the Minnesota River. So we understand that there is, it's a value asset, but it's a pond. And so, but we understand it is a great pond. And we always have to make sure that it doesn't get overgrown with all of the things. And our staff work very hard to make sure that we keep that up. So what I am hearing from everybody is that we're going to move forward. And it might not be going through the pond. But we all have to have a conversation about what's the best route if we're going to connect the southern portion that is already done, that comes from Callaher Park, all the way to Sunset and then over to Rose Bluff. Okay, because Rose Bluff on the north side is done. And so it goes into a nature preserve, and that's the Kramer Nature Preserve. Now, have you all walked the Kramer Nature Preserve? It is very nice. You might want to do that. Yeah. Because it is really a wonderful place and there's a lot of great education for native species and birds and all of that that goes on in the nature preserve. So it's just connecting those two pieces. So what I'm hearing is that staff move forward. You ask us to, to give you direction whether to move forward with the project, move forward and then engage the community in the process. But I guess, what are some of the things? I think the JPA would be something that you, city manager, it is now your domain and looking at what the JPA is going to say.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm certainly adhering to the majority direction of the council. I think there's a, I think there's a couple of things that are important here. First, to the members of the community who came out tonight, thank you. Right, this is what we want to do and we want to provide more of these opportunities. One of the things that's very important to me i- is that we provide real opportunities to connect and, and have conversations about what we're doing here. So I, I'd like to do a couple of additional things. I think staff has been working over the course of the past year to, to build a better framework for process around these types of projects. What I'd like to suggest is that we bring that process back to you. So there's some clarity about when decisions are, are made and who's making them. I think that also would be helpful for the neighbors and for the community. I'd also like to bring you an engagement plan. How, how are we going to connect with the community through that, through that process? Because I, I don't want to see this project be one of those things where we've talked about it now and we just go do stuff. I, I would far prefer for us to be very clear, both with the, the nearby neighbors as well as the community about how we're going to talk about making decisions through that process moving forward. And then finally, what I'm hearing from the council is we will start work on, on that JPA. But that JPA will be very much incorporated into the process to make sure that we're not, we're not getting ahead of ourselves through our, through our, through our partnership with the county.
That's great. So that, that gives you all clarity and understanding. The next time you come in, staff is going to say, here's the process, so you all know. What we try to do here is to manage all of our expectations. So having a process allows all of us to understand what's next in line. And then, as Greg, our city manager, said, and then, when are the decision-making points? And I think, and then we'll make sure that you all get the information so that you can be coming in and hearing that discussion, okay? And the other thing is that all of these meetings are going to include you. Kay, you've been part of the water bodies study that went on where we cleaned up Early Lake and, and Crystal Lake and got those off the impaired waters list. So you've been around. So, and you've seen that all of that has all been driven also by our community members. So have faith in that, okay? And now, City Manager Lindberg is saying, we're going to bring it back and then you'll know what the process is. You'll know when we're, when we're doing what. And you'll be invited to all of that.
Yes, certainly, communication on that is important to us. And I, I would agree with your experience. We can absolutely do better than, than simply some online experiences. So we will do better in that regard and we'll be clear about what that process looks like and how we're going to do that.
Okay. Members of the council, you're okay? Yeah.
I want to, just a quick follow-up. I, I think it would be worth teeing up a conversation about e-bikes and e-scooters in the future and what we want our policy to look like because the email and our attached to our background, these things are getting increasingly faster. And I think that's a conversation we've got to have, not just about Sunset, but across all of our trails. Just planting a seed that I think that's maybe something that we haven't discussed in a while and maybe we need to.
Okay. Okay. Ryan, John, Greg, okay?
Yes.
Yeah. So, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you for staying engaged. This is, this is what we do in Burnsville, you know? Your voice is not absent. Your voice is heard. Okay. So we'll see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, the next item here is the, you're on roundtable and this is the Code Review Task Force. Michelle?
We wanted to step quickly, check in with the council on their feelings for the Code Review Task Force. We currently have eight members on the task force. It's down from the original membership of 15. We have also had two members indicate that they did not want to continue on the task force past the two-year mark, which would be June 30th. So that would put us down to six. Staff is proposing maybe we recruit as part of our annual recruitment process for commissions this year for five additional members to bring that complement back up to 11. There is any, take any suggestions if somebody feels something.
Are you okay?
Oh, yeah.
Let's just, everybody, okay?
Do you want to surpass? I've been begging for that.
So let's, let's make sure that, yeah, so you've already, I see that, you know, all of the invitations have gone out and through social media and also press releases about all of the, so all of this. Have we gotten a lot of people interested?
Not yet.
Okay.
A lot of our, a lot of our engagement, when the Burnsville bulletin comes out, that's where we usually start.
Trying to make it appealing.
Okay, good. Vince?
You said five?
Five.
Would it be worth interviewing for more than five in case we have initial fall-off?
No, we're going to seat five.
Seat five more?
And then we would still.
There may be a lot more people, but we, we seat five.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, it's like all of the other commissions, there's usually more and we only have so many seats.
Understand that, but if people fall off, if they get into it and say, whoa, I don't like this and then leave, do you want some backup?
I will put some on deck, just like we do the other commissions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I would lean on Mac.
If we have people that we don't seat. Yeah, Michelle?
Councilmember Workman, Mayor. The, there is a pretty steep learning curve for this task force. So it might be difficult to have people, you know, have more than half of the group be brand-new.
You don't want that number of incumbents.
And also, the, that, we feel like the remaining sections' titles wouldn't take so long. We, you know, if it was more than a year, we could again increase the complement back up in 2024 when we go through this process again.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works for me.
I don't know if you've ever seen their backgrounds. Councilmember Dustinson can tell you how many pages in their backgrounds to, that they have to read through. And then they have to make sense out of all of that. And the attorneys are always there.
And they have to make comment and ask questions before they ever get back in and have the discussion again. So there's, there's work on it all month long.
Yeah. Okay. So shall we just let Michelle do and Erica do their work?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item is reports. Vince?
I feel like I should say something about the festival, but I don't.
Do you want me to fill in for you?
Toss it to Dan. I have nothing.
That was a good relay.
Okay.
Disco.
Dan G?
CVB meets next week for our board meeting. The only thing I have to say about the Art and Al Ed Jazz Festival is we've gone to two days. Friday night at the Ames Center and all day at the Nicholas Commons Park. And tickets for Steve Cole go on sale next week at the Ames Center.
Okay. Yeah. Kara?
Big one will be DBB and that is happening next week.
Yeah.
So. You know, when we had the meeting last week, we did agree on getting the dissolution plan going so that everyone can just figure out what the heck we're doing. So that's what we're processing forward with.
Yeah. Greg's Council Weekly was very good.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, because it, so what's the deal with Jay?
It's a loaded question.
Uh-huh. It's a very loaded question.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Yep. You know, you just have to read those things and read between the lines and, hmm. Okay, what else is going on here? But you're very good at what you put out there for us to understand what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, it is a complex situation. That's been going on for a longer period of time and, yeah. That's been going on for a longer period of time and yeah, so. But I think we're, we're getting close to where we're going to have some really concrete information and then our city, other cities can all start to just like figure out what are we doing to move forward.
Yeah, we do not want to leave any money on the table. Never.
No, I'm not interested in that. I, I told them I will, I will sit in these meetings for the next however many months until we bleed you dry of our money because you are not getting it.
No, okay. Good, thank you. Good to hear. Yeah. Dan? Kay?
I just got word that the news covered our e-Gest electric bus and it might be on Channel Nine at nine o'clock news tonight for the MVTA. Luther Widener, our executive director, is scheduled to present in front of the I-35 Solutions this Thursday to provide an update on MVTA and suburban transit. We are on the MVTA board or planning a strategic planning session. A lot of changes going on in transit as everybody probably has heard because it's one of the hot topics discussed. There's not much going on at the legislature, so transportation really rises to the top when other things are more boring. Tongue firmly in cheek. Things like on-demand. Microtransit continues to explode for all the suburban transit providers as well as Met Council's Met Transit. Suburb-to-suburb service is very strong. Special events is growing. We're working with Scott County and the Renaissance Festival to provide bus transit for the Renaissance. It's basically like the state fair. There's a lot of traffic. There's lots of cars and there was, there was a massive backup that Scott County will not allow happen again. And so we're gonna, we're working on putting in a very robust transit solution so people don't have to get caught into that backup of traffic and walk a mile to, from where they park to be able to get to the festival. So it's going to be a great service. Hopefully, everyone will jump on that. The I-35 Bridge Replacement Visual Design Elements Committee is, continues to meet and we're, we've been looking at bridge design options and also sound wall designs, which is very important because it's like a giant billboard. And, and some of the sound walls aren't, the paint is peeling off and they look poor already. So we're influencing MnDOT's decision on that, as the Madam Mayor knows. The transportation bill that is currently being ballyhooed at the legislature provides more funding to go into transit. However, it does not have any, it does not prescribe how much should go to suburban transit providers. This is very concerning to the STA members and we've been working with our lobbying firm very closely with the bill authors to make sure that we are not going to be at the behest of what Met Transit would like to give us because we already are in that kind of situation. We've lived in it for 30, 40 years and it usually doesn't work out very well for us. Met Transit runs a ongoing three to $400 million budget deficit on an ongoing basis and I'm sure they would love to eliminate that if they could. And, and they, they do a very good job at trying to eliminate their own deficit by short, shorting the suburban transit providers. So we are never able to fully fund where our demands are. And so it's always a battle. A little tug-of-war for the money there. Festival update from, from Councilmember Workman. We have successfully negotiated a, an extension to our main stage, four feet off the front, four feet on the back. And that is going to allow us to move our multicultural stage performance from one o'clock to seven o'clock on Saturday from the Civic Center Amphitheater, which faces the south and is somewhat hidden, to put them on the very large, very expensive main stage with the very large and very expensive audio system. So that's a, that's a really great thing because all of the bands, the mariachi band, the Latin band, the Somali dance troupe, the garage performers are all going to be performing on a very large stage. And it will allow our main stage nighttime headlining band to come set up and their portion of the stage won't be disturbed. So pretty excited about that. It's, it's going to be a big boost. It provides music on the stage. This extension also allows us to bring a warm-up band on Friday night. So normally, historically, the, the festival has brought in a warm-up band because the headlining band usually didn't require, you know, an hour or so of setup and sound check because it wasn't necessarily that large of a performance. Back in 2021, I think, starting in 2021 with the hiring of Take It To The Limit, the Eagles Tribute Band, that was a band that was so big that they required a lockdown of the main stage at 3:00 PM. And so warm-up bands were kind of knocked out of the mix. With the stage extension off the front and the back, we'll be able to bring in a warm-up band on Friday night. So now we will have, A2B determined. Got some options that I'm looking at. We'll have live music starting at 5:00 PM when we're standing at the front gate welcoming everyone. At 5:00 o'clock and then at 7:30, of course, our headlining band will play, which we are bringing back Johnny Home Band on Friday night because he drives a great crowd. And last year, of course, as we all know, we had a little drizzle, which put a little damper on things. But there were a lot of hardcore Johnny Home fans that came out and still stood in the rain and enjoyed the show. Lastly, at our last I-35 Solutions last month, we had a presentation from Elko Newmarket folks about the I-35 and County Road Two interchange and, and a lot of growth. Lot of substantial growth going on down there and they've got a serious issue with a 70-year-old interchange and bridge. And so they, they, they put an eye-opening presentation on with all the growth and what's going on down there and the problems that they're having at the interchange. And if you may, may or may not know this, they're right at the, sort of the edge of the metro county area, which means they're governed by the MPO, the Met Council. But it seems really, really rural. So they're really caught in between two different worlds. They would, if they were not in the, the seven metro or nine metro county, they would be handled by MnDOT and that bridge probably would have been replaced 10 years ago. But because they're part of the MPO, they're kind of at the bottom of the priority list over and over and over again. So the I-35 Solutions is trying to, because Elko Newmarket is a member, we're trying to give them some support and getting some funding lined up. And I've been working with their elected officials over the last month or so. They are not members of NLC, but I'm recruiting them, suggesting that they become members because the resources that I have access to through the NLC Transportation Infrastructure Services Committee has given them some options that they can go after direct funding. But it's difficult for small towns to, to go after direct funding. There's a lot of support that needs and, and NLC folks and, and US DOT are aware of that. So they've actually introduced some new tools to help these smaller communities. That's it.
Okay. With the municipal legislative commission, we're going to be meeting with the governor on Thursday to talk about the priorities for MLC. And that's on Thursday. We, um, community, the Burnsville Community Foundation is meeting on Thursday and we continue to work on, on our mission and also what we want to fund next time. The other is the International Festival Committee continues to work diligently and getting things all put in place. We will have a Thursday evening. We'll have the art show at the Ames Center. We'll continue to do that. And so, and then we have on Saturday, the International Festival. We'll still have the Kids Corner and, and all of the different music that we present from different countries. And that's all I have. Michelle, you have anything else? Greg?
I do not.
Okay. Jenny and Bethany, you guys have anything?
I do not.
Hugo?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing more to add.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we stand adjourned.